20th, 2023. First of all, I would like to say that Dave Zonia resigned from the board and I'd like to thank him for his service and I'd like the board to introduce ourselves. So, is that what's Fidelis?
Fidelis Songborki.
Tom Wilk.
Diane Trapasso.
Louis Banks.
Josh Cole.
Okay, let's, um, approval of the minutes of August 16th. Everybody got a chance to review and read them over. Any changes or whatever? If not, do I have a motion to accept the minutes of August 16th?
I'll make the motion to accept the minutes from August 16th.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And one abstain, abstention. Thank you. Okay, next, we have, okay, it's a little after 6:35, we have the continuation of the special permit for 60 Main Street. Ashley Stepek is requesting to convert the existing structure from residential to commercial for the purpose of a two-chair salon and create a non-conforming parking lot at the rear of the building.
Lenett Jalbert from Jalbert Engineering to present the project for Mr. Stepek.
Maybe you should just take the, um...
Before I do that, I'd like to give the certified abudders list and the legal notices.
Janaye, could you put up the site plan, please? I'll take them, sure. I'll take them. That's fine, thanks.
What we have here is the property that's located on Main Street in Sturbridge, that's 50 Main, and it's an existing structure that's located, located right here. And if you notice, the, the structure that is proposed is, is the same thing. There's, there's no alterations on the structure per se, other than the fact that a handicap ramp is located on the westerly portion of the property and the southerly portion for access to the building itself. The landscaping at best is, is minor and that there's flowers that are located in the front location. We have pictures of, if you'd like to see them. And also in the back of the property, there is a lawn area, and this area here, and it will remain as a lawn area, other than the paving area that's being constructed here. The property was, at one time, presented to the planning board, planning department, that showed parking inside of the area here, with an access right here on that side that was turned down by the Conservation Commission, and that, that they didn't like it. So, the only thing we did is agree to a non-conforming parking lot immediately adjacent to the existing parking lot on the easterly side of the property. And in the process of doing that, we had to come up with a 20-foot easement for this property here, which was pending. There's a plan drawn separately under Exhibit A showing the 20-foot easement in that area. There's the plan right here. Here's the 20-foot easement that's going off of this property here. The status of that will be presented after I'm done talking. The, the building itself is going to be converted from a single-family residential home in a commercial zone, which is, there's going to be a salon. And in the process, the salon itself will have two seats in it, in the immediate front of the property. And that will require four parking spaces, plus we put in two more for employees, so we have all the applicable parking that's going to take place in here.
Excuse me, Janaye, could you switch the plan, please? Thank you.
Okay, now, what, what we're doing here is the, the property, at one time, this area right in here was a, was an access discontinued years ago, but the pavement is still there. It's within part of the state property, so we just left it as is. And then there was parking, which is immediately adjacent to the entrance on your left right here, for single-car parking, which we had left that vacant, too. And in the process of the thing, what we did is we couldn't keep the parking located in this area here, immediately adjacent to the access going into the, from the abudders' property, which is, yeah, the access is right here going into the back is a parking lot back here. But the thing is, the, in doing the location for the parking itself here, the, we, we set the, the parking spaces only seven and a half feet from the property line, mainly because we didn't want to encroach upon any more of the land for conservation. So, we've got seven and a half feet there, plus the 20-foot easement. So, in essence, we would have 27 and a half feet for turning and access off of that property here, going back and forth into, into the property. So, the, the parking lot would be, even though the construction of itself was, isn't non-conforming in that we should have the 10-foot setback here and an access, and no backing out into here, which we couldn't do that because it was turned down by Conservation. The property itself is serviced by town water and town sewer, so there's no problems there. The operation of the property is on Saturdays, excuse me, on Sundays and Mondays, it will be closed, and then the other five days a week will be by...
Appointment only.
Appointment only for the, for the other five days. So, the, the parking will be more than sufficient, the access will be sufficient. There's lighting that is taking place on the front of the property here, there's spotlights that, that locate the access ramp, and the lights in the back for the parking area right here, there's, there's spots in the, in the center of the back of the building, like the parking spots. The, there was two lilac bushes were located in the front of the building, right here. They were relocated into the back of the building here, so we saved the lilac bushes. And what we did is we put in a diffuser chamber stretched back here, and then we'll plant it here for the Conservation Commission. If there's any questions, we'll be happy to answer.
Okay, um, any, Fidelis?
No questions. No questions.
Liz?
Yes. Where were the new parking spaces that you created? Did you create any new ones?
Yes. Wait, that's a, we're proposing to create them, okay? They're, they're not in place at the moment, okay?
So, are they gonna, are they gonna be where the easement is, or?
The, the easement is pending, and there's an attorney here tonight, Mr. Caplet, who will discuss that later, okay? Are you, would you want to do that now?
Certainly, yes. Yeah, glad to. The parking spaces are going to be on the original property. They're not in the easement. The easement is to the east. As you can see, it's presently, the property already has a 10-foot easement. That goes back to the 1950s. What the proposal is, is to expand that from 10 to 20 feet, so that two cars can pass each other coming and going, which is obviously a, a safety feature. What has happened with that is that we submitted this to the present owners of 58. They're in agreement with it, but they are selling their property. And I've spoken, well, that's way like this, and I've spoken to the attorney for the new, for the buyer. They're in agreement with this in principle. Right now, we're just negotiating basically who's going to plow it and who's going to maintain the parking lot. That's, and those details are what reason we don't have a signed agreement here tonight is because we're just trying to figure out who's responsible for what.
Okay, so, there's, I just want to make sure that I'm clear. When people come to use the shop, they're gonna...
They're gonna turn right...
Park next door.
No.
They're gonna park behind the building, it's Mark 60. There'll be nose-in parking.
To the, the original plan we're going back to?
Yeah, the plan hasn't changed.
The plan hasn't changed.
So, it's going to be parking back here?
Look at the mark, the pile on the right. Though with all the overriding, it's a little hard to read. You can see there are five or six parking spaces right behind the building, right behind the 60 building.
My question. All right, thank you.
So, that's why we don't have a signed plan. What we would be requesting is, if the ZBA would approve this tonight, we would ask that they approve it, but there'd be no construction done on this property until we have the signed agreement and we've recorded the easement. Ms. Stepek already owns the property, so that's already been done.
I mean, there's room on there for the parking, that, that's for sure.
Oh, yes, yeah, there's room behind 60 for the parking. The question is, that doesn't affect the easement, it doesn't affect the 10-foot easement, and certainly won't affect the 20-foot easement. So, all we'd ask is, get an approval when we get these other things lined up with the owner's, new or old, of 6, of 58, I'm sorry, then we'd be able to record it, and then we could go forward. And so, that's basically what our presentation is. This use is certainly compatible with other uses that are allowed in this area. Right now, in point of fact, Ms. Stepek is practicing her, her art across the street, and so she's just literally moving across the street. She's renting space there, and she'll be the owner here. So, it's typical, the type of use that is allowed in Sturbridge in that area. Our master plan, as you people certainly know, encourages the use of this area for commercial, and this would be a typical commercial-type use that would be used in that area. If there's any questions on the legal basis, I can address it. But that's where we stand as of 6:30 tonight.
Josh, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay. Um, we have department memos. There were no concerns from any of the departments, except Conservation, and they went through Conservation, and that's why we're here, getting an easement for that. So, um, anybody from the public here for this application? Nope? Nope, all righty. Um, so, is the board ready to close the public hearing? Could I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Are we all in favor? Okay, so, our first thing is to make a motion to find, pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 hyphen 15.2 of the zoning bylaws. Does someone want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to find that the proposal by the applicant, Ashley Stepek, pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 hyphen 15.2A of the zoning bylaw, to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming use or structure for the property located at 60 Main Street, will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the, than the existing nonconformity.
Do I have a second? Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, all right. Now, we have to make the motion to grant this special permit, and, um, the condition that we'll have on this will be to make sure before any construction starts, there'll be a signed and recorded easement agreement.
Yes. Yeah. Excuse me, I actually gave you recommended conditions of approval on page five of my report.
Okay.
There are actually four that I would recommend in this case.
Okay.
Would you like me to read those to you?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, I would recommend approval with the following conditions. Number one, the easement agreement as proposed shall be signed by all parties and recorded at the Worcester District Registry of Deeds, and a copy shall be provided to the Planning Department prior to construction of the parking lot. The site plan shall be revised to reflect the new easement area once the easement has been recorded, and that shall be provided to the Planning Department prior to construction of the parking lot. All improvements shall be in conformance with the plans submitted and approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals. If any changes are made during the Planning Board review process, updated plans shall be provided to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Four, all other necessary permits must be obtained prior to the start of construction.
Do we all agree on the, um, conditions? Okay. So, could I have a motion to grant the special permit?
All right, I, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Now, do you, do you want me to still read the conditions as you stated?
No, you can just say, "conditions as stated." "The conditions as stated."
Okay. Okay, so I make motion to grant the special permit requested pursuant to Article 18, Section 300 hyphen 18.2, parentheses, two, close parentheses, of the zoning bylaw to convert, to convert the existing structure from residential to commercial use for the purpose of a two-chair salon and create a non-conforming parking lot at the rear of the building, as shown on the proposed site plan prepared for Ashley Stepek by Jalbert Engineering at 54 Main Street, Sturbridge, with the planned date 4/25/23, drawing number 23012, revision 3, and the revision date 7/20/23. The proposal, um, the proposal will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity, and, um, and the owner may apply for a building permit.
Okay.
Sorry, and also take into consideration all the conditions that the four, the four conditions that were, that you read.
And maybe we can just add Exhibit A easement, easement plan to that.
Okay, and also the plan, the Exhibit A, the Exhibit A easement plan, uh, dates 9/12/23, job number 23012 as well.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
unanimous. Okay, thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, Len. You want a piece?
No, this.
That's mine.
That's good.
You want a piece of that?
No. You don't need that for the registry.
Say what?
You don't need that to go to the registry.
Yes.
I'll give you more copies.
Okay. Come on, we get the agreement, we'll call you.
Something on the table with someone?
That's our point.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, next, we have a public hearing for a special permit for One Ha, One Pine Haven Road for Luis and Tina Marie Gonzalez. The applicant is requesting, and after the fact, special permit to allow a previously constructed 16-foot by 12-foot deck with a 28-inch setback where 30-inch foot is allowed. Um, Fidelis, you want to read this, um, the public hearing?
Yes. In accordance with the provisions of the Mass General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 20th, 2023, at 6:45 PM at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street, Sturbridge, MA 01566, and, or by, by virtual means, if circum, if circumstances warrant, in accordance with applicable law, on the application of Luis and Tina Marie Gonzalez for the property at One Pine Haven Road. The applicant is requesting an after-the-fact special permit pursuant to Article, Article 18, Section 300, Section 300 hyphen 18.2, parentheses, 2A, so, parentheses 2, and a finding pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 hyphen 15.2A of the zoning bylaw to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing nonconforming use or structure for the property located at One Pine Heaven Road, Pine Haven Road. The applicant has constructed a 16-by-12 deck with a 28-feet setback where 30 feet is allowed. No other nonconformities will be intensified as a result of the proposed alterations. The proposed request can be viewed at https://www.sturbridge.gov/zoningzoningboardappeals, hyphen pages, sorry, slash pages, slash recent hyphen findings or arrangements can be made to view the application packet by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by email at jaylacy@sturbridge.gov. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this proposal should appear at the time and place designated. Members of the public may watch the meeting online via the Towns On-Demand Video Broadcast or via cable television at Channel 191. It is the intent to have this public hearing in person. However, if circumstances warrant, the board may choose to hold this hearing via virtual or hybrid, in-person and virtual means. In the event of a virtual or hybrid hearing, notice and a link shall be posted on the ZBA website. Please note that the meeting, hearing, will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast unless otherwise required by law. Signed, Diane Trapasso, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you. Um, you just want to present?
I'm not, and I'm representing Burton Engineering. I'll hear if there's any questions concerning the plan.
Okay, um, um, do you want to explain anything, or we'll just wait to see if there are any questions, or?
Okay, uh, the deck was built, and apparently there was no permit called, and it was in existence, and that's when, when the building official got involved. And now, what they're looking for is very simply an approval to allow the 28-foot setback. The existing sideline is an existing fieldstone wall, and that is a heavily grown area, so it's not really, during the summertime, it's not visible from fiscal road.
So, actually, the, um, the homeowners built the deck without getting the permit. They, it wasn't already, like, there without permits. They, they built it with, okay.
Yes.
Okay, okay. Um, department heads, um, they didn't have any major concerns over the project, so does, um, board members have any questions? Josh, do you have any questions?
Um, is that the front of the house? Yes, okay.
Okay, if I may, I believe a billing permit has been obtained since that time. Is that correct?
No, because I won't sign off on it. After tonight, I may. So, it's pending. It's been applied for. It has been applied.
Are you adding anything, or you're just trying to get the existing?
Just, just the existing deck as, as it is.
As it is, you're not doing anything, you just want to get a permit for it?
Yes, just wanted to get the approval of the, of the 28-foot setback.
The plan shows a proposed above-ground swimming pool, is that part of the?
That's already, that was already...
That's already been approved.
Oh, okay.
No, that was part of the preliminary plan.
Okay.
That's when the deck was discovered, if I may. So, um, the property owners came in for information on installing the pool, and when she prepared the plan and the deck was shown on it, we said, "Oh, we didn't have a permit for this deck, so you really should have come to us." So, we completed the pool application and then asked the applicant to apply for this to try to clean up the property.
Josh, anything else? No. Liz?
Um, no, the garage is more noncompliant than...
The garage is more noncompliant than the deck, so... No, I don't have any questions.
Tom?
No.
Fidelis?
Well, it is what it is. It's the end. So I don't have any questions, really, only, I guess I'm just curious as to how it happened. Well, it got built, so, you know, but I'm just, just for the record, I was just wondering how, how it happened that it was built without...
Okay, we're first-time homeowners, and once we bought it, we decided to put the deck. We were not aware that we needed to pull the permit.
Was there an existing deck?
No, no, there was just stairs. And then when we were, when we bought the pool, we needed a permit, we were told, and that's when they brought it to our attention about the deck. Here we are.
I guess it's a good thing, it's only two, two, what, two feet over? Twenty-eight? Yeah, no question.
Forty-eight and a half.
I mean, I don't have any other questions. I mean, either, it's, it's done, it's done, so... Anybody here from the public to, no, okay. You ready to close the public hearing? I have a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
Second.
Okay, you can have it.
Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing? unanimous. Okay, can I have a motion to find?
Sure. So I make motion to find that the after-the-fact proposal by the applicant, Luis Antina Marie Gonzalez, pursuant to Article 15, Section 300 hyphen 15 point 2A of the zoning bylaw to allow the construction of a deck within the side setback requirement for the property located at One Pine Haven Road will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay. Now, a motion to grant special permit?
All right, I'll read that. So I make a motion to grant the special permit requested pursuant to, pursuant to Section 18, no, pursuant to 18, Section 300 hyphen 18 point 2, parentheses 2, of the zoning bylaw to allow the construction of a deck within the side setback requirements of the building as shown on the plot plan prepared by, prepared for Luis A. Gonzalez and Antina Marie A. Gonzalez of One Pine Haven Road Starbridge, prepared by Burton Engineering Inc., 39 M Street, Starbridge, with the planned date of June 22nd, 2023. The proposal will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity, and the property may apply for, and the, and the owner may apply for a building permit.
One second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
You can keep your deck.
You can keep your deck, you have your special permit.
And then I'll sign off on the permit application, but I won't be in until Friday morning, so...
Thank you.
Okay. So now we have a determination.
Just a determination.
Yeah. Determination for 139 Walker Pond Road, Jason Duquette. The applicant is requesting a determination to construct a 28-by-40 detached two-story garage in front of the existing dwelling. Okay, you can present.
We're just proposing to build a garage in front of the house.
Yeah, not in front of, did you say existing garage?
No, I said the existing.
Dwelling?
Existing dwelling.
Oh.
Yeah. No, before you go on, there are no major concerns from, from department heads with this, so, and no concerns from the town planner. Do, I guess I'll just go to, board members have any questions? Liz, do you have?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I just, for full transparency, Mrs. Duquette is a neighbor, but I am not, we're not a butters.
Okay.
So just to let you know.
Okay.
And the only reason we're here is because, because of... The functions, but these lots were made in the 1960s, so that's, there's nothing you can do about it.
Josh, do you have any questions?
Do not. Straightforward.
Tom? Fidelis? No, I don't have any either, so with that, I guess we're ready to make a motion to grant.
I make a motion to grant the special permit requested pursuant to...
Determination.
Determination.
Determination. Determination. It's a determination. Simple one.
Thanks, Janey.
I make motion to... This still pursuant to Section 300?
No, no, we're just going to...
It's on the back of the...
I can, I can like kind of say it and then ask for the motion. Let's see, to grant the determination, let's see, no. This determination is to Jason Duquette for the property located at 139 Walker Pond Road to construct a, construct a 28-by-40 detached two-story garage in the front of the existing dwelling. It does not intensify or create additional nonconformities, and the owner may apply for a building permit for the described activities as shown on the plans and documents submitted. Do I have a motion for that? Motion?
Well, I can.
Okay. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Okay, it's all yours. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I will sign off on your permit, too.
Can you get a permit?
I found a lot of things, I found a lot of things on the back door this, this meeting around.
Have a great night, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have a determination, Nine Seater Pond Road, Doring Grouse. The applicant is requesting a determination to construct a 25-by-26 detached garage. The, there were no concerns from department heads. There are, would you like to explain what you're doing, and then also about the easement, the overhead?
Okay. So a few things there, right?
Right.
There's the two pieces of property that, where the red line is going down the property. So they're going to, they are already working with Zach from existing grade to combine the two lots.
Okay.
To clean that up, so you're covered, so that'll all be one lot, and hopefully by next week they should have that. But that's one part of it. So the second thing is the easement with the electrical line overhead. Did they get all the letters?
Yes, I did put that in here.
So we met with, I couldn't get, I couldn't get, and the engineer couldn't get the answer that I wanted, so I went to the, to Mass Electric or, or is...
National Grid.
National Grid, sorry. National Grid, we met there with the engineer on site. He mentions in his letter, the Blue Book, there's a book that everybody can reference, the codes that they follow or they recommend. So we're going to stay with the building at their recommendation to stay at the highest peak. It says if you have, in the book, it says something about if the roof line is accessible from like a door, or you can walk out on the roof, and you have to be within, you can't be within 12 feet of the, their electrical line, 12 and a half feet, I think it is.
12 and a half. 12 and a half, it says.
But I think the, this roof line is not going to be accessible from a door, or you'll have to physically put a ladder, which actually makes it a little bit less, but we're going to, we're going to stay probably within that 12 and a half feet from the high line, from that electric line. And they said they were, he said that's okay, and we've done it in a few different places before. On lead mine, we have one that goes right over the, like, right over the roof line like that. I think those are really the only two, probably the two major concerns with the property.
Okay, any questions? Tom, questions? Fidelis?
No, no question.
Josh? Questions?
No question.
Liz?
No, I just, so the shed is going to be relocated over there by the house.
Yes. Yes.
That there's plenty, 15 feet is plenty for the...
Right, they're going to be right on the setback on the side. Yep, yep.
I mean, like from the road to the...
Yeah, so the driveway, the road ends right at their, right at their house. They are the last house on the road.
Oh, so you're going to make a driveway?
So that driveway that comes down, right?
I see it, right here.
I don't even, I can't even see the dock, but you can see where the line comes across the end of the road. That is, you know, that's the end of the road. There is no road that goes past them. They are the last one on the street. Yeah.
Okay.
That little corner right there, I think, back further is, is the other house.
So is it unpaved at the end of the road?
So right at the end, right at the end where it says Cedar Pond and it crosses over?
Yep.
That's, from there into their, their house is all unpaved. It's a stone driveway, yeah. So it's a permeable surface, which is good. There's no asphalt there, and we're not planning on putting asphalt, they want to keep it stone anyways. Yeah.
Any other questions, anybody? No? Okay, with that, I have a motion? Anybody? Motion? Want to do it, Liz?
Okay, I'll try. You can correct me anytime I...
Okay. You can do it.
I make a motion to grant the determination for Doring Grouse of Nine Seater Pond Road, Starbridge, Mass. No, for the, um... To build a, I think it's a, they're not prepared to do this.
26 by 26.
Wait, what's the dimensions?
25 by 26.
I think it's 26 by 26 on the plan.
Oh, okay. 25 by 26, or is it?
26 by 26.
26 by 26 garage.
Detached.
Detached garage, you know, located at Nine Seater Pond Road. It does not intensify the existing or create additional nonconformities, and the owner may apply for a building permit for the described activities as shown on the attached survey, and it's in accordance with, um, plan, project number 2086, dated 6/3 of 2023, and it's sheet 1 of 1, and there's no revisions, and it's... Do I have to add anything else?
No, that's, that's it. That's it for the determination. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. All right, good luck.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Sign off on you next week.
Next week?
I'll be back in Friday, but I'll do it with...
Yeah, I won't, I'm not that much of a rusher.
Is the ANR coming in for Tuesday?
I think so.
Okay, perfect.
Hopefully Zach, he said he's, I called him right after I left you, so...
Okay, so I'll sign up pending ANR.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, our next meeting is October 18th. Do we have anything, Janey, so far? Jane? Do we have anything? Don't think so. Oh, good. Maybe no meeting, okay. Any old business, new business? Anybody? No? Nothing? All right, a motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute, what about this?
I already did, oh, I did that in the very beginning. Thought it would be better to do it in the beginning, and then we introduced ourselves.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
When would the meeting be with the selectmen for the...
We don't know. The position is posted right now, so I guess that's one good thing to announce this evening. There is an opening for a ZBA member to serve until the annual election, which will take place on April 8th, 2023. It is posted on the town website, and applications may be submitted to the Board of Selectmen's office. When the, when we receive applications, they will be provided to the zoning board and to the Board of Selectmen, and we'll hold a joint meeting to appoint a new person. So I don't have any dates, I guess it will depend on how many applications we receive, and then I'll work with Robin Grim to schedule a meeting.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So if anyone has an interest to be on the board of the zoning board, just go to the town's website, and there's a link to apply for it, so... Anything else? Nope. A motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor? Like 7/19, maybe?